I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for February 24th, 2025. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. How about that snow? Are we all tired of it now? We know that this winter weather has caused some challenges, and we truly appreciate the flexibility and understanding shown by parents, students, and staff. I now would like to share with you the YCSD mission statement. The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. Will you now join me in a moment of silence? Now I will share some information about our pledge leader, Koi Brookman, a first grader at Dare Elementary School. Koi is known for his sense of responsibility. Every day, he arrives at school with a positive attitude and is ready to dive into his work. His teachers and classmates can always count on him to be dependable, making him a standout student. Koi has proven himself to be a stellar role model for his peers. His actions consistently reflect the values we strive to instill in all our students: doing great work, accepting responsibility, and remembering to be safe and embracing kindness. Outside of school, Koi loves playing golf, basketball, and anything that has to do with virtual reality. He enjoys making new friends and trying new things. He recently tried snowboarding, which he loved. Koi's character makes him a truly well-rounded student. Whether it's helping his classmates or taking on a new challenge, Koi embodies what it means to be a dare dolphin. Please join me in welcoming Koi Brookman as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.[131.22][131.22][applause]
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now recognize our Seniors of the Month for each school. We also have seniors from last month joining us, so we will welcome them as well. When your name is announced, please stand along with your family members while we hear about your accomplishments. We'll first start with Bruton High School. Mr. Schaefer, tell us about that.
Yeah, he got it right. Yes, we have seniors everywhere this month. Let's see, for February, Senior of the Month is Kelsey Evers. Go ahead and everybody stand. Yeah, there you go.[198.12][198.12][applause] Bruton High School is proud to acknowledge Kelsey Evers as our Student of the Month. Kelsey's academic journey is marked by her commitment to excellence. Her involvement in across-country soccer and field hockey teams demonstrates her dedication to teamwork and her ability to lead with grace and resilience. As president of the senior class, a peer achievement leader, and membership in the Chemistry Honor Society and Rogue Kappa Honor Society, Kelsey has shown remarkable leadership, inspiring her peers through her example, and fostering an environment of mutual respect and collaboration. Her selection to represent Bruton High School at Virginia Girls State and her acceptance to speak at the FBI Norfolk Future Training Agents Program are testimony to her leadership potential and her commitment to civic engagement. Kelsey's understanding and empathetic nature are qualities that set her apart. She consistently strives to view situations from all perspectives, a trait that will serve her well in her future studies and career in international relations. Her ability to connect with others, whether on a debate team, forensics team, or through various volunteer activities, highlights her versatility and adaptability. Congratulations, Kelsey.[278.83][278.83][applause] Just keep rolling, okay? All right, now we're going back to January. And this is the Senior of the Month for Bruton for January, and it's Sophia Leva. Go ahead and stand up, guys.[298.33][298.33][applause] Sophia Leva is one of the best and brightest at Bruton High School. Through her involvement in the Governor's School for Science and Technology, she was selected to participate in a summer highly selective internship at Jefferson Lab. This opportunity reinforced her resolve to pursue a career in engineering. Additionally, Sophia is an extraordinary student leader. As captain of the Bruton High School color guard, Sophia's determination and creativity are instrumental in maintaining the quality of the team's performance. Her ability to choreograph and teach extensive routines speaks volumes about her commitment and resourcefulness. Sophia's commitment to STEM education is equally impressive. As vice president of the Roots for STEM Club, she has played a crucial role in providing hands-on STEM experiences to young students, particularly those from lower-income backgrounds. Her work in organizing after-school camps and collaborating with local organizations has touched the lives of hundreds of children, igniting their interest in science and engineering. The overwhelming response to their recent robotics camp illustrates Sophia's extraordinary ability to engage and inspire a new generation of learners. Congratulations here.[378.13][378.13][applause]
Okay, Mr. Pyavich, tell us about our Grafton Senior of the Month.
Yes, I would like to invite Erin Briganza to stand up with her family and be recognized as Senior of the Month for Grafton.[395.53][395.53][applause] Grafton High School is proud to recognize Erin Briganza as February Senior of the Month. A dedicated leader and outstanding student, Erin has served as SCA class president for both her junior and senior years, playing a key role in reinstating the junior prom. She approaches all aspects of life with a determination not struggling for perfection but working tirelessly to create a better future for generations to come. Erin excels both academically and athletically. An incredibly driven student, she believes that nothing is impossible and that she can accomplish anything she sets her mind on. As a member of the Grafton High tennis team, she has worked her way up to become Grafton's number-one player and a team captain. She is also the DECA president, a DECA state qualifier, and FBLA regional champion and state qualifier, and has competed in indoor track. Beyond school, she is actively involved in the Taekwondo leadership team, further demonstrating her commitment to personal growth and leadership. A well-rounded student and exceptional role model, Erin Briganza is an easy choice for this recognition. Congratulations, Erin.[473.13][473.13][applause]
Okay, next, we have Ms. Fairman who will tell us about TAB High School.
Thank you, and we have two this time. For February, Lourdes Olivencia.[491.19][491.19][applause] TAB High School is honored to announce Lourdes Olivencia as our Senior of the Month for January. Whoops, sorry. It says February at the top and it says January in the body. Sorry about that. Lourdes is an exceptional student whose dedication to academics, leadership, and community service makes her a deserving nominee for this recognition. Lourdes has demonstrated resilience and determination in her pursuit of excellence, maintaining a rigorous academic schedule while actively contributing to her school and community. Lourdes is deeply committed to helping others, as evidenced by her volunteer work with the Peninsula SPCA, Key Club, and as a mentor to young dancers at her studio. Her leadership skills shine in her roles as president of the Psychology Club, undersecretary general of the Model United Nations, and co-captain of the Forensics Club. Notably, her participation in Model United Nations and co-captain of the Forensics Club, oops, sorry, it was double-typed here. Notably, her participation in Model United Nations has allowed her to overcome a variety of challenges and grow into a confident and articulate leader. Her academic achievements speak to her strong work ethic, including excelling in advanced and college-level courses consistently throughout her high school career. She is also an active member of the National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Beta Club. Lourdes' passion for criminology and criminal justice has inspired her to pursue a career in law enforcement. Specifically, Lourdes aspires to work in the Behavioral Analysis Unit of the FBI. Her unwavering dedication to making a difference, both in her school and in her future career, makes her an outstanding representative of TAB High School. Her compassion, intelligence, and leadership make her truly deserving of this recognition as Senior of the Month. And this one should be right for January, we have Ryan Prinzel.[634.13][634.13][applause] TAB High School is honored to announce Ryan Prinzel as our Senior of the Month for January. Ryan embodies the qualities of an exemplary student and leader through his dedication to academic excellence, extracurricular involvement, and community service. As a highly engaged member of TAB High School, Ryan balances a rigorous academic workload with his passion for the performing arts and leadership roles. A talented and versatile performer, Ryan has taken on lead roles in numerous school productions, including Grease, The Play That Goes Wrong, and Legally Blonde. Beyond acting, he was selected as the director of the one-act play Cut for 2024, demonstrating his ability to manage and inspire a cast and crew. Ryan also shares his passion for theater with the next generation by volunteering as an assistant director and backstage mentor for community theater camps and productions. Ryan's leadership extends into DECA, where he served as the vice president of member engagement, and into the Thespian Honor Society, where he serves as a liaison. He has also been recognized for academic achievements, earning induction into the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and Beta Honor Society. Whether mentoring young performers, competing at DECA events, or engaging his peers through his vibrant school spirit, Ryan exemplifies hard work, creativity, and kindness. Ryan plans to further his education in business while continuing to explore his passion for the performing arts. His well-rounded character and unwavering commitment to excellence make him an outstanding representative of TAB High School as January Senior of the Month nominee.
And I get to tell you about our York High Senior of the Month. York High School is proud to recognize Brady Connor as our Senior of the Month.[768.13][768.13][applause] As captain of the football team, Brady exemplifies leadership and teamwork, inspiring peers with his dedication and sportsmanship. Beyond football, Brady coaches upward basketball, sharing his passion for sports with younger athletes. This role not only showcases his commitment to athletics but also highlights his ability to mentor and inspire the next generation. Brady is highly recommended by his teachers for this recognition due to his consistent academic excellence and dedication to learning. Faculty members describe him as genuine, sweet, personable, qualities that make him stand out as a remarkable individual. His peers echo these statements, noting that he is always willing to lend a helping hand or offer support. Whether on the field, in the classroom, or within the community, he consistently demonstrates a commitment to making a positive impact. We are honored to recognize him as our Senior of the Month and are excited to see the great things that he will continue to achieve. We're going to now move into our Student Service Awards and our Volunteer Awards. So Dr. Shander, would you please go down to the front for these recognitions? We will be combining our award recipients according to their school, so I will ask Dr. Lindsay Kidd, Dare Elementary Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared about both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for Dare Elementary. First, we have our Student Service Award recipient, Kensington Wall. Mr. Richardson, will you please tell us about Kensington as she comes up front?
Kensington Wall is a shining example of kindness, compassion, service, and service at both school and her community. She serves as team leader for Dare's Anchored for Life program, providing support for transitioning students by giving tours to new students, supporting those moving away, and providing kits to students with parents on military deployments. Throughout last year's food drive for Thrive Peninsula, Kenzie was an integral part of the team, helping to bring our school together for our community. Kenzie also volunteers alongside her grandparents every week with the PTA cut-and-paste team, preparing materials for teachers. Kenzie is a dedicated member of the Youth Volunteer Corps of Hampton Roads. She has volunteered at Chat's Camp, a horse camp for children with autism, helping campers explore the outdoors, ride horses, swing on zip lines, and engage with sensory boards and navigate trails. She has played bingo with senior citizens at a local nursing home, assisted with the installation of a fence for the goat camp at Bluebird Gap Farm, and cared for babies at the Crossroads Community Church Nursery. Our school is proud to call Kenzie a dare dolphin, and we are thrilled to celebrate her as our Student Service Award recipient.
Now we have our Volunteer of the Month for Dare Elementary, Ms. Kristen Riddle. Ms. Riddle, can you please join Dr. Shander and Dr. Kidd up front? And Mr. Richardson, would you tell us about Ms. Riddle?[981.13][981.13][applause]
Kristen Riddle has been an incredible asset to Dare Elementary School, and it is with great appreciation that we recognize her as our Volunteer of the Year. She is always ready and willing to lend a hand, no matter the size or nature of the task. Whether helping in classrooms, donating supplies, or contributing to school celebrations, Kristen consistently goes above and beyond to support the school community. Kristen is currently serving as the PTA president, always stepping up to ensure that any event or initiative is a success. She gives her time and energy generously. She has also been an all-in tutor program facilitator and consistent substitute teacher, spending more days at the school than not. She is a driving force behind the parent-teacher partnerships that enhance our school's success. Kristen's unwavering dedication to supporting Dare Elementary students, families, teachers, and staff has made a profound and lasting impact. Her kindness and commitment and tireless work ethic make her a true gift to our school community. Kristen's support makes a splash in the lives of our dare dolphins.
Now I would like to ask Ms. Lisa Jalamo, Coventry Elementary School Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared for both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for Coventry Elementary School. The Student Service Award recipient this month for Coventry Elementary is Kristen Bescallis. Mr. Pyavich, will you share about Kristen as he comes up front?[1084.56][1084.56][applause]
Christian is an honor roll student and exemplary school citizen. He can often be found helping others in need and is a friend to everyone. Christian has positively contributed to his school community through his involvement in service-oriented clubs. He represented his class as a student ambassador for two years. In this role, he welcomed new students, ensuring they felt comfortable in their new school, and assisted with the program's kindness grams service project benefiting the school's Cougar Comfort Closet. For the last two years, Christians has served as a member of the Care and Cougar Club. He has become a leader within this club, often supporting others with the tasks needed to facilitate school-wide service projects. Christian's impact extends beyond Coventry. He is involved with St. George Coptic Orthodox Church. He volunteers each year at the church's Egyptian festival, helping with setup and transporting food to station during the festival. Christian is a member of the church chorus, attending weekly practices and participating performances during the year. He also serves as a young deacon, assisting with the weekly services. Christian's compassion and empathy are unsurpassed, making him truly worthy of his recognition.
The Volunteer of the Month for Coventry Elementary School is Mr. Tim Kreiner. Mr. Kreiner, would you please join Dr. Shander and Ms. Jalamo up front while Mr. Pyavich shares some information about you?[1186.13][1186.13][applause]
Coventry Elementary School is proud to honor Mr. Tim Kreiner as our 2025 Volunteer Award recipient. A graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy, Mr. Kreiner served 24 years as a naval officer before becoming an educator. He earned his teaching certification through the Troops to Teachers Program and taught eighth-grade science for 23 years, receiving honors such as Troops to Teacher of the Year for Tidewater, Newport News Public School Teacher of the Year, and Tidewater STEM Teacher of the Year. Mr. Kreiner has volunteered at Coventry Elementary School since 2019, where his granddaughter, who is now fourth and seventh grades, are currently and former Cougars. He has worked across grade levels, sharing his passion for science with hands-on lessons, including building planter boxes, butterfly habitats, bottle rockets, and exploring topics like sound waves and light. Mr. Kreiner has also revitalized our learning gardens, planted bulbs, provided seeds, set up bluebird nest camps, and crafted benches for outdoor learning spaces. As a master gardener, Mr. Kreiner is involved with the York Learning Garden, Healthy Virginia Lawns, and the Trees Stewart Program. His dedication to education and the community has had a lasting impact on Coventry, and we are grateful for his contribution. Thank you, Mr. Kreiner.[1275.13][1275.13][applause]
And finally, I will ask Ms. Candice Welch, Queens Lake Middle School Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared for both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for Queens Lake Middle School. The Student Service Award recipient this month for Queens Lake Middle School is Jornay Kennedy. Mr. Schaefer will share some information about Journey as she comes up front.
Journey Kennedy exemplifies a deep commitment to service, both within our school and the wider community. She has dedicated her time and energy to helping at New Zion Baptist Church, where she assists in distributing book bags and school supplies for the upcoming school year and has volunteered as an assistant for youth activities during Easter. Journey was instrumental in the organization of the 2024 Powder Puff Football Event at Queens Lake, taking on the responsibility of recruiting staff volunteers, organizing teams, creating practice schedules, and designing advertisements, flyers, and t-shirts. Her leadership extends beyond event planning. As a current cheer captain, she leads by example, balancing her responsibilities while maintaining an honor roll status. Journey's selflessness, organizational skills, and ability to inspire others have made a lasting positive impact on both our school and the surrounding community.
The Volunteer of the Month for Queens Lake Middle School is Ms. Jamie Kit. Ms. Kit, would you please join Dr. Shander and Ms. Welch up front while Mr. Schaefer shares some information about you?[1404.13][1404.13][applause]
Jamie Kit is the perfect nominee for this award. She has been an incredible asset to the athletics program. Whether it's being the team mom, giving kids rides home when needed, or simply offering her time and support, Jamie always goes above and beyond. For football season, she provided a pregame meal for the students after school before every game in the cafeteria, and both the coaches and students were incredibly appreciative of this gesture. She has also played a key role in organizing the eighth-grade night at Bruton High, creating posters for all the eighth graders and setting up a backdrop for families to take photos. Additionally, she helped decorate and set up for the football banquet, contributing her time and effort to ensure everything ran smoothly. Jamie has also been a huge support for the basketball program and coordinated eighth-grade night for our boys team, has run the spirit store, and provides our students the opportunity to look great in their Queens Lake green and gold attire throughout the school year. Jamie is truly deserving of this recognition, and we are so grateful for everything she has done for Queens Lake Middle School athletics this year.
Next, we'll have our York Foundation for Public Education presentation, and Mr. Schaefer will share some information about that.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Rich Shook, York Foundation for Public Education member, to step forward and assist Dr. Shander as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Koi Brookman, a first grader from Dare Elementary School.[1518.13][1518.13][applause] For reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting, we'd also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Kenzie and Wall from Dare Christian Bescall from Coventry Elementary School.[1542.54][1542.54][applause] And Journey Kennedy from Queens Lake Middle School.[1552.13][1552.13][applause] We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month for this month and last month. Kelsey Evers and Sophia Leva from Bruton High School.[1570.04][1570.04][applause] Erin Briganza from Grafton High School.[1578.76][1578.76][applause] Lourdes Olivencia and Ryan Prinzel from TAB High School.[1590.04][1590.04][applause] And Brady Connor and Julia Cooper from York High School.[1600.66][1600.66][applause] Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Sweet Frog gift card is also being donated by Derek Mahan from Sweet Frog. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients.[1628.13][1628.13][applause]
Take a shot, you can stand up, get where you need to get, get the pictures you need
It is my pleasure to highlight the Music Technology Course at Grafton Middle School. This innovative program is designed to address the growing need for creative and technical skill-building, preparing our students for the demands of the twenty-first century. In today's rapidly evolving world, creativity and technical proficiency are essential. The Music Technology Course provides students with a unique platform to explore and develop these skills. Through hands-on projects, students learn to compose, produce, and edit music using industry-standard software and equipment. This not only nurtures their artistic talents, but also enhances their technical abilities, giving them a well-rounded skill set. Here to tell us more about the course is our wonderful music technology teacher, Mr. Eric Mussowhite, and four of our amazing students from the course, Ariel Brown, James Hobert, Noah Jung, and Scarlett Winkles.
Thank you, Mrs. McLemore. Good evening, everyone. We're very excited to offer this Music Technology Course to our Grafton Middle School students. We are currently in our second year of this brand-new course, and the engagement, excitement, and enrollment growth generated has truly been gratifying to see. The Music Technology Course is a one-semester class that covers several aspects within the Arts, AV Technology, and Communications Career Cluster and is meticulously designed to align with the key competencies required for future-ready graduates. Students engage in collaborative projects, fostering teamwork and communication skills, and along the way, develop critical thinking and problem-solving abilities as they navigate the complexities of music production. Central to the course is the exploration of music production through writing, arranging, tracking, and mixing using technology. The course also includes lessons on the history of the music industry and the business behind it. Students are also given specific critiquing guidelines, what we call KSHH feedback, and practice applying constructive criticism to aesthetic judgments throughout the semester. Here to tell us more are four students from the Music Technology Class, Ariel Brown, James Hobert, Noah Jung, and Scarlett Winkles.
Hi, I'm Ariel Brown, and I would like to show you the equipment we use in the Music Technology Course. Our main item we use in classes, of course, are school laptop computers. In our computers, we use Soundtrap, which is a DAW or Digital workstation. Soundtrap is just like a recording studio where we can record, mix, and create sounds, music loops, and even entire songs. We also use this mini piano keyboard with our computers and Soundtrap to create melodies, chords, and drumbeats. We also use online resources to produce an electronic press kit, or EPK. We also use our EPK to develop our artist persona and to store our completed projects through the semester. Here's James to tell us about the process of making songs.
Hi, I'm James Hobert. You will see the process I used to create an original song in Soundtrap. Here you can see the purple squares I'm highlighting to choose drum patterns. Patterns work best when making drumbeats. Next, it's always a good idea to audition sounds to see what you may like. After adding a bass sound, I like to play back the audio to see if it works. Here you can see the individual tracks being built. Next, you can see how I entered individual synthesizer sounds with the mouse. And here's the tracks so far. And now the completed project with some more added tracks and editing. Now here's Noah to talk about the sound collage project.
Hi, I'm Noah Jung. Here's a video of my sonic collage project titled Spooky Hallway. Our assignment was to make a collage of sounds to represent a thought or idea.
When you come up to the podium, be careful where you rest your hands. There are consequences.
I started out with this piano sound to make it spooky. Oh yeah, my two words were, I think, spooky hallway. So I added the piano sound because it sounded cool. And then this, it was this part? So I did tapping noise. It was originally supposed to be like water dripping, but I made it more rhythmic, and I added some bass because that's when I decided to make it like a real beat instead of just a sonic collage.
Here's Scarlett to tell us more about the class.
Hi, I'm Scarlett Winkles. I'm here today to express and share with you all my time in the Music Technology Course at Grafton. When I arrived at the first class, I was unsure of what would come my way. It was a completely new thing to me, but I was so excited to see what I was in store for. After just a class or two, I quickly realized my expectations were exceeded. I learned so much about the basics, like rhythms, harmonies, melodies, timbre, and tone, tempo, and many more. I also learned more specific things, like how to use effects with technology, use Soundtrap, and layer different sounds to make a new hit. I feel so fulfilled after taking Music Tech, and I don't regret it. It wasn't too difficult to learn how to make cool music, and everyone had different styles that came out in their projects. Some were very funny, some were chaotic, and some were really impressive with how they were put together with different pieces. I think Music Technology would be a perfect course for somebody who's passionate about music, somebody who likes to express their creativity, loves to collaborate with others, or somebody who simply wants to have a good time.
Thank you, Ariel, James, Noah, and Scarlett. In our second year of the program, we have doubled enrollment numbers. The course is extremely popular, and the students are highly motivated by the cultural relevance of the course, recording music that they created. We look forward to starting a Music Technology Course, Music Technology Two course next year, and I'm planning teacher collaborations with the Make It Your Business program, as well as music for an upcoming GMS podcast series for Read Across America Week. We are also in talks with the Grafton High School Choir Director about providing music for a future singing competition featuring Grafton students and faculty. Music education in York County has a great past and a bright future. It is with pride and confidence that I look in both directions. Thank you very much. We would like to invite questions or comments.
I have one.
Yes.
Have you ever put any lyrics along with the music that you've created?
So there are rare times when people will add lyrics, but personally, our class is very shy about their voices on the microphone. So that's a very rare ordeal, but it can happen because there is a microphone in Soundtrap.
Okay, I was just wondering if you had thought about if anybody was into creating poetry or anything and then putting it to the music?
Absolutely. We do have lots of opportunities for vocals to be added in different ways. We also have jingle writing as a part of the course, where they have to make a commercial, come up with an idea, come up with a product, create the music, and then the jingle for the words behind it, yes.
Have fun. I'd love to hear some of those sometime.
We can arrange that.
Well, that's just awesome. I mean, this is very cool. And have you ever thought, because I have an associate that does beats, okay, and sells the beats and rappers and all, they buy the beats from them and all, you could actually be training for that, couldn't you?
Yes, we could. I believe we'll need to speak to the lawyers about profits and sharing. But yes, we're on it. Yes, sir.
That's cool.
Well, you guys done a wonderful job. Just seeing Mr. Schaefer popping his head to the rhythm, like, you know, it's like, yeah, brought some fun to the board, so we appreciate that. Who's the best in doing this?
Everybody raise your hand.
Let's be honest. You guys are champions. I just want to tell you guys, you done phenomenal job, and I wish I could hear all of it, all of your creations. That would be awesome.
We would love to have you visit sometime.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you.
So is this a course you could recommend for somebody who's maybe not very musically inclined?
Yeah, definitely. You learn like all of the basics about music, and like you learn how like to use different notes, and you learn what the different vocabulary terms are in the course, so you don't need to have any experience to be involved with it.
That's great. It's a great job. Love it.
Thank you.
The board is now going to take a short recess to meet with award recipients and their families. All right, we will now reconvene the meeting. We don't have any unfinished business to discuss this evening, and no presentations, so we're going to roll right into comments of citizens. We have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is the general topics, and the second is a forum specifically relating to comments regarding the FY26 operating budget. Before I open for public comments, I'll share some remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling civility and respect for our students. We ask that speakers direct their comments to the school board as a whole and not just to one individual. Speakers will present their comments at the podium. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and district. If a concern is brought to the board's attention, a staff member will reach out to you to follow I now open the public participation for comments of citizens. Our first speaker tonight is Pam Puchel.
Good evening. My name is Pam Puchel. I reside in District Four. The general public seems to have a misunderstanding of what the U.S. Department of Education actually does. What it does not do is create curriculum, academic, sports, or social programs. The department is responsible for distributing congressionally-approved funds to students and schools while overseeing their use to maintain accountability and compliance with federal regulations. They also uphold federal education priorities such as civil rights protections and support for disadvantaged students and ensure equitable access to educational opportunities. They provide funding for K-12 education as well as support student financial aid such as Appel Grant and post-secondary education. They collect and analyze data to identify trends and best practices. They support research, including teaching techniques. Some of the programs that are supported by the department are Individual Education Plans for Physically and Mentally Challenged Students, Head Start, Student Financial Aid, Research Grants, and Early Childhood Learning. I want to stress, they do not determine what your child has taught. That is done at the state and local level. Elon Musk and his court jester, Trump, have promised to obliterate the U.S. Department of Education. York County is a military compassionate duty station, which means this is a community where parents of handicapped students are stationed. Will this still be funded? Does your child have an IEP? Does your child participate in Head Start? Without Appel Grant or student loans, can your child attend college? Is your child LGBTQ+, a minority, a non-Christian, a female, or an immigrant who will no longer have protections against discrimination? About nine percent of the York County budget is funded by the U.S. Department of Education. While it is not a large portion of the budget, if we have to fund it ourselves, we will have to ask the supervisors for increased funding, or we will have to make cuts. Perhaps parents won't like it if these cuts are banned, sports, teams, or clubs, and can no longer be funded. Of course, we can fire teachers, increase class sizes, and cut curriculum. We must also consider cuts to Medicaid because we will have more sick students as they will no longer have health insurance. We will experience the loss of federal funding for free or reduced meals resulting in hungry children. Thank those who really don't care about the consequences of their actions, to include Donald Trump, Congressman Rob Whitman, and Governor Glenn Youngkin, as well as Virginia Congressman Ben Klein, who has submitted a bill to close the Department of Education. Thank the voters who heard Trump's promises to destroy democracy and deconstruct our government and thought it was a good idea. Those who say this won't affect them will be surprised when the results of this lunacy come knocking on their door because it is only a matter of time. I personally believe our children deserve better. It is a pity that not enough people share that belief, which is evident by their silence. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Forrest.
My name is Mark Forrest. I live in District Five. My daughter attends TAB High School. I'd like to thank all the school board members, Dr. Shandor, and administrators at York County School Division for the work you do to make our school system literally the best in the state. Tonight, I'm here to talk about something that will bring opportunity to many of our students, which has been left out of the budget for far too long. I'd like to talk about adding VHL-sanctioned Boys and Girls Varsity Lacrosse to York County public schools. As a brief history, Boys and Girls Lacrosse has been a club sport in Grafton, TAB, and York High Schools since 2007. That's eighteen years as a club sport in these schools. Over that time, these club programs in York County have asked several times for the school board and previous administrations to progress to full varsity status and participate in the Virginia High School League. Our most written proposal was put forward to Y C S D administration in October of 2024. This proposal included monetary and equipment contributions totaling approximately $60,000 to aid teams start up and offset costs of the school system. Unfortunately, we discovered last week that our proposed goal to add lacrosse to these schools for spring 26 season was not included in the current budget. After asking, we were informed that there was not enough funding and that other local school divisions are prioritizing construction of turf fields before they convert their current club lacrosse programs to V H S L. Our proposal has effectively been put on pause yet again. We know the current Y C S D administration is working on it. The principals, the athletic directors in each school have voiced their support, and they have been amazing. Eighteen years as a club sport should be proof enough this sport is sustainable and it continues to grow. This spring, Grafton, York, and TAB High Schools will have approximately 150 students combined playing Boys and Girls Club Lacrosse. These player numbers are comparable to, and most times exceeding, the numbers for other current varsity sports teams. For many student athletes, this is the only sport they will play in high school. The current club teams play at the help of the Hampton Roads Lacrosse League. To play, each player must register with H R LAX and pay a $225 registration fee. As you can tell, the registration equipment and club fees alone can be cross-prohibitive for some students and even consider playing lacrosse. Most programs have extra equipment to donate to kids who want to give it a try, however, the $200-plus registration fees can be exclusionary for some students, even with fundraising. In addition to having self-fund their sport, high school lacrosse players in York County are excluded. In addition to having self-fund their sport, high school lacrosse players in York County are excluded from using many school facilities, including weight rooms, practice fields, indoor facilities, and athletic trainers because they are not recognized varsity sport by the school. They're a club. York County has an accomplished history of players who have gone on to play in the Division One, Two, and Three NCAA collegiate levels. However, no one would ever know. There are no trophies in the display case for the championships they have won, nor any pictures on the wall from the multiple USA Lacrosse All-Americans that have come through YCSD schools. Playing on a club team makes them ineligible to be recognized for their athletic accomplishments, such as all district, all region, all state, and limits their exposure to scholarships. Our teams are good and ready to challenge at the highest level. Neighboring school systems in Richmond and Virginia Beach have successfully added VHSL lacrosse and are actively looking for teams to play here on the peninsula.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank the administration for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Siegel.
Good evening. I'm David Siegel, District Five. I have two students at TAB High School. And I'm here as well to support TAB Lacrosse, York Lacrosse, and Grafton Lacrosse. 18 years is a long time to be denied access to VHSL and the recognition these students deserve. We've proposed in October, as Dr. Forrest said, almost a zero fund. We're funding the VHSL. We have the money. We have the equipment. We have everything needed. It's plug and go, and yet we keep being denied. So the students need their recognition. My daughter plays on the field hockey team at TAB. TAB High School is 80-0. They were here just a few months ago. You celebrated them. They play teams all the way up in Northern Virginia. They play teams in Fredericksburg. We're also being told that we're not allowed to play teams, or we're not allowed to go VHSL because there aren't any teams in our district. Well, there are teams in our district. Williamsburg James City County has agreed to go as soon as we go. But then they say, oh, well, York County says, well, no, we'll go when they go. And here we are caught in this conundrum. We need to go. We need to be the leaders. We need to show everybody in the region who we are. We're leaders. We're not followers. So please, I hope that you can have an opportunity to take a look at our proposal. It's zero-sum money. We have the money. We have the funds. We have the equipment. My daughter plays for the field hockey team. She's got three state rings, three-time state champion. She's on the wall at TAB Gym. When I walk in, I can see her, okay? We have a boy who's a senior this year at TAB Lacrosse. He made the United States U-18 National Team. He won't see his face at TAB High School, yet he wears TAB gear when he plays. It's a shame. It's a travesty. He can't come back to his alma mater and look at his face. This is time for it to go. We need to be VHSL. We need the recognition for these students. They're missing out on opportunities for scholarships. They're missing out on a lot. And it's 18 years of success at all the schools. Please, take our concerns seriously. The last and most important thing, yep, I already did that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Tim Edwards.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tim Edwards. I'm from District Three. Both of my boys are York High School graduates, and for 10 years I was the coach of the York High School Boys Lacrosse Team, with last year being my last season. I'd like to thank you all for what you do and for all your hard work. I know it's not easy. I'd like to encourage the board to continue to work to add varsity Boys and Girls Lacrosse to full VHSL status. We've had healthy club programs, as we've mentioned, at TAB, Grafton, and York for almost 20 years. Over those 20 years, our teams have been very successful and competitive within the HR LAX Club League, with both Boys and Girls winning numerous playoff games and championships. With lacrosse in the area being a club sport, many student athletes have not had the opportunity to participate because of the financial barrier. Lacrosse is athletically welcoming to all their sports. We've all had football, basketball, track, baseball, softball, wrestling. Soccer players transitioned to lacrosse and become very successful. All of us involved over the years have worked diligently to ensure that as many players have the opportunity to play as possible. Many of our players have missed opportunities with all-state honors and academic recognitions, which has had an impact on college careers and resume building. Even with the barriers, we have all had players that continue their lacrosse and academic careers at a college level. Even though I've been out of coaching for a year, it appears there should be a sizable monetary contribution for startup, which shows to me and should show to you all that the level of commitment is there from families, students, and the community. We're the only area in the entire Eastern Seaboard that does not have lacrosse as an official varsity sport, whole East Coast. York County School Division is known for giving their best opportunities to students, as you saw with, for example, with the music students earlier this evening. Adding lacrosse as a VHSL sport would extend those opportunities. I would again like to encourage the board and school leadership to continue to work and add lacrosse to full VHSL status. Thank you for your time and your hard work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Chi.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Chi. I reside in District Four, and tonight I want to speak about concerns I have regarding special education funding in the coming years. Virginia received $2.5 billion in federal education funding in 2024, making up 12% of our state school funding. Of that, $346.7 million was designated for special education under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. If the Department of Education is dismantled, these funds will not transfer to the states. Instead, they will be reallocated to other federal priorities, creating a crippling financial gap for Virginia schools. Even with federal funding, Virginia is already underfunding education. YCSD is projected to be underfunded for the '25-'26 school year, while surplus in money in the state general funds remains unallocated, money that could support our schools. A state budget proposal is on the table, but it will require Governor Youngkin's approval. We need strong advocacy from local leaders, including this board, to push for this passage. With funding cuts, programs like 504 plans and IEPs will suffer. Special education is not optional. It is a necessity. These students will become members of our community and workforce, and it's crucial that they receive the services they need to reach their full potential. I want to also push back against the misconception that IEPs and 504 plans are handed out too easily. That is simply not the case. I personally been through an almost year-long process to secure an IEP for my daughter, and it required teacher observations, many, many specialist assessments, and medical evaluations. No parent walks into a school and is simply given accommodations. The process is thorough, data-driven, and requires specialists. The funding that supports these evaluations and services is at stake. Dismantling Department of Education and failing to adequately fund K-12 schools at the state level is shortsighted. It's the equivalent of stepping over dollars to pick up pennies. It's not going to lower federal debt. It's going to weaken public education and ill-prepare our future workforce. I urge you, school board members, to take action. Advocate at the state level. Speak out against these cuts and fight for full funding of our public schools. I truly believe that pushback from the local level to the state level can truly make it up to the federal level and make a difference. Our children's futures depend on it. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Jillian Rice.
Jillian Rice, District Five. Good evening, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, and esteemed members of the school board. My name is Jillian Rice, and I'm a senior at TAB High School, currently serving as one of the three captains of the TAB Girls Lacrosse Team. Tonight, I am here to advocate for the inclusion of lacrosse as an official VHSL sport in York County. Lacrosse is recognized as one of the fastest-growing sports across the United States, and it is imperative for our schools to embrace this trend and its potential benefits. Not only does lacrosse offer students the chance to build strength, speed, and coordination, but it also fosters teamwork, resilience, and leadership skills, much like the other VHSL-recognized sports. The TAB Lacrosse Club was established in 2007, making the club as old as myself. Over the past 18 years, the sport has experienced significant growth in our region. Last year, our girls roster consisted of 14 players, whereas this year, that number has expanded to 23. This increase in participation reflects the sport's growing appeal and underscores the importance of formalizing it under VHSL. Transitioning lacrosse to VHSL status would also have benefits in terms of accessibility and inclusivity, as it would help reduce the cost barriers that often limit involvement. Many students, regardless of their financial background, would be able to participate in lacrosse. This year, it costs $225 per person to play in the Hampton Roads Lacrosse League, along with additional fees to the TAB Lacrosse Club and USA Lacrosse. Playing a sport for your high school should not cost this much money. Making lacrosse a VHSL-recognized sport would allow TAB Lacrosse to receive enough funding to tremendously decrease these fees per student. Then, students who may not be able to afford the original high costs would finally get the chance to participate. Furthermore, making lacrosse a VHSL sport would provide players with the opportunity for state-level recognition. Currently, as a club sport, we are ineligible for honors such as all district, all region, and all state. The highest recognition available is all-conference, despite the dedication and effort we put into the game. I myself have received all-conference honors the past three years, but never got the chance to be considered past that level. Formalizing lacrosse under VHSL would allow athletes to receive the accolades they deserve for their hard work. As someone who has missed out on numerous opportunities due to lacrosse only being a club sport, I find it unfair to myself and my teammates that we are unable to be recognized beyond our league any longer. So I urge you to please add lacrosse to the YCSD budget to make it a VHSL sport and allow future students to be able to get the opportunities and recognition I never got the chance to receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Anderson.
Good evening, board members. My name is John Anderson, and I live in District Four. I am the York Girls Head Coach. I have three children that have played or are currently playing lacrosse for the past 15 years, and two are currently playing in college. I would like to talk about the hows and whys of adding VHSL-sanctioned Girls and Boys Lacrosse to York County schools can happen and why it's needed. Clubs will contribute significant startup funds, equipment, and uniforms to help the freight costs associated with the new sport. Lacrosse programs will generate revenue on their own through tickets for games and fundraisers to help sustain it, much like other sports. This will attract other schools within the Bay Rivers District to add a lacrosse once they see the success of the York County programs. This happened with the Virginia Beach teams. There will be no shortage of VHSL teams to play from our area, including Virginia Beach and Richmond. This will add another viable option for athletes who could not play before due to high costs and give all students the opportunity to play lacrosse. Now, I would like to add a letter from my son JT Anderson, class of 2020 at York High School, and what lacrosse has done for him. Lacrosse is the entire reason I'm where I am in my life right now and couldn't be more thankful for the sport in its entirety. Lacrosse gave me the opportunity to become a strong leader on and off the field, helped me find my voice, and to always work hard for what you want. It is the oldest organized sport in North America, but that doesn't tell you the lineage of people who have been positively impacted by the game. I played Division One Lacrosse at Hobart College in Geneva, New York, which is a program rooted in tradition, not only because of its location, but also because it's home to 16 national championships between the Division Two and Division Three levels before being elevated to the D1 lab escape. The game means the role to the players, both past and present, and being able to interact with many of these individuals has deepened my understanding and love for the sport. Starting my career playing in the HR LAX League for the York Titans in elementary school has now transformed into a lifelong appreciation for the sport and what it can offer. I've had the opportunity to travel up and down the Eastern Seaboard, go to Deerfield Academy, and play on the number-one team in the country. Me, people have been instrumental in my growth as a person, and all of this while currently playing on the same grounds that the game has played 100 years ago. There is no other game in the ground quite like it. Call the fastest game on two feet. The sport has parts that everyone can enjoy, whether it's speed, finesse, power, tempo, strategy. Lacrosse offers a blend of many people's favorite sports. The sport will finally be included in the 2028 Summer Links. I believe it should become a varsity sanction in our area. I'd like you to consider adding high school lacrosse as a VHSL-sanctioned sport in the 2025-'26 budget.
All right, our next speaker is Danielle Francis.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Francis, District Two. My child, niece, and nephew are current York County students. There are so many concerns to be addressed regarding the ongoing presence of Linda Fairman on our school board. Fairman's pattern of cherry-picking facts to misrepresent situations destroyed any hope that she would be able to build trust with the public. Her grandstanding behavior at meetings, trying to draw highly partisan public figures into her drama, only highlights the lie she based her school board campaign upon. Her lie to voters that she was going to remove politics from our schools. Fairman leaking documents to her friends that appear amateurishly altered while disregarding FOIA norms that allow public access to original communication holds true to her historical behaviors with our schools, that Linda Fairman cannot be trusted. Yet, she continues to posture and waste the public's and school division's time. After all her anti-diversity, equity, and inclusion statements, and having not attended a single school event all year, she recently made a brief appearance at one of our division's largest diversity, equity, and inclusion events, the Unified Tigers Basketball Game. Those of us there saw it for the hollow gesture it was. And in fact, some families questioned whether she had ill intent in being there. Linda Fairman has never shown support of the best interest of our students or school division. As parents, staff, and students, we know Linda Fairman cannot be trusted, unless it's to land York County in legal trouble. Lastly, let me close by focusing on hope. Hope as I ask York County School Division to move forward with renaming McGruder Elementary School. As a Bruton graduate myself, this is important. There is valid documentation and known history on why McGruder needs to be renamed. The current name is in violation of policy against naming our schools after people. And most importantly, our children, the students, know the history, and they know why the name change is so very important. Please, take action to rename McGruder Elementary School to Bruton Elementary School. It's hope our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvonne Johnson.
Good evening, school board. My name is Yvonne Lynette Johnson. I'm representing Bruton District, and I'm going to start by reading a poem. First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. I am here today, and I am... This poem was written by a pastor, Martin Niedlmore, who was initially an anti-Semitic Nazi supporter. He changed his tune when he found himself in a concentration camp for speaking out against the Nazis. And in a time when history is being whitewashed and rewritten, identities are being lost. So, I am standing here on behalf of those who came before me. I'm standing here, speaking for the descendants of the ancestors who served this nation in every conflict and war since the Revolutionary War. I'm standing here as a former student of Frederick Douglass. And when Frederick Douglass, when all the schools were integrated, Frederick Douglass was renamed McGruder Annex. The people that were forced to go to McGruder... The people that were forced to go to McGruder was because the people that, when they integrated, the white parents did not want their children to go to a school named after a black man. However, black students were forced to go to a school that was named in the Jim Crow era and is in honor to the Civil War Confederate General John Bankhead McGruder, who ordered the burning of Hampton on August 7, 1861, targeting fugitive slaves and contraband. Next year marks the 250th anniversary of the founding of our nation. To have any school named in honor of a traitor to the United States of America who defended -- of anyone who defended the institution of slavery is a disgrace and a slap in the face to all of us. It's time to rename McGruder to Bruton Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Lassiter.
Good evening, Mary Lassiter, Bruton District. I want to concur with the comments about the lacrosse team. All students should be able to participate in sports and get -- if there's an opportunity to get a scholarship, they should have that opportunity. I've had many grandchildren and nieces and nephews that have gone on to college, so that's a great opportunity. I've also advocated for my grandson that had an IEP, and you really need to support those children. They need that. I'm here tonight to talk about the renaming of McGruder Elementary, and it's time, and I'm waiting for a response from you all with something definite. When are we going to be put on the agenda? We have proven everything that we need to prove to you about all of those false statements that were in the newspaper, that you had educated the students and parents that attended McGruder. That was never done. The false statement that that school was named in honor of the predominantly black community of McGruder, that was not true. Your county needs to be honest. You need to let the parents know that this school system has not always been -- had schools named after regions like that the fallacy is out there saying. You've had two schools, McGruder -- I'm not sorry, not McGruder. You've had Frederick Douglass and James Weldon Johnson that were changed when integration started. So, I am waiting for your responses. I almost didn't come tonight because it's like, what good is it going to do? Are they just ignoring me? Are they just kicking the can down the road? But it's time that we get on an agenda and start something definite about this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Dr. Alan Kennedy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Alan Kennedy. I live in District 1, and I would like to applaud you for your first reading tonight that's to come on the public comment policy, which literally recognizes the right to, well, applaud. So, I applaud you for that. I think it is a step in the right direction to recognize the constitutional right to freedom of speech. And that brings me to my second point, that not so long ago, the now former Chair of this Board, Linda J. Fairman, had threatened to have the sheriffs drag me out of here because I dared to stand and applaud, and because of the content of my speech. Now, we recognize that that is unconstitutional. And yet, Ms. Fairman now seeks to get back in the -- get the Chair to become Chair again, and she said as much in January when she violated FOIA in order to present a letter that appears to be altered, although the second page does mention Chad Green. So I suspect that's what was altered. And then, when that was pointed out, she then went back with the help of A.C. Cordova -- A.C. Cordoza, and got a letter signed by Attorney General Jason Mieres, which all rests on this idea that if the -- which comes down to saying that she could not have been removed as Chair because she had to be allowed to serve out the one-year term. And yet, I think it's a legally contested issue because the law doesn't actually say that. And the Attorney General acknowledges that, but then tries to make the argument that in the absence of such a law, you as Board members should be prohibited from removing Ms. Fairman. What I think this shows is that Ms. Fairman has friends in high places, Chad Green, A.C. Cordoza, who want to reinstate her despite all of the violations of FOIA, all of the violations of the Constitution, and all of the disrespect that she has shown toward the citizens and taxpayers and students of York County. So I hope that you will stay the course. I applaud our Chair, our Vice Chair, on your election, and thank you for the work that you did.
Thank you. Okay, we next up have Logan, is it Kane or Cone? Cone, okay.
Hello, I'm Logan Cone, and I live in District 5. Good evening. I'm a sophomore at TAB High School, and I recently transferred as a freshman from HRA to play lacrosse. Playing lacrosse at TAB gave me a community where I could meet new people and make friends in a place where I otherwise didn't know anyone else. I've been playing lacrosse for a long time, and I'm seriously considering playing in college. However, it's very difficult for me to get exposure as it's only a club sport, and clubs' statistics are not viewed the same as VHSL statistics at the next level. Adding VHSL lacrosse to York County schools would greatly increase the exposure that I could get, as well as many, many other athletes that I personally know share similar ambitions as me in playing lacrosse at the next level. Thank you so much for your time, and I really hope you consider this issue.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Deanna Ricks.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Shandor. My name is Deanna Ricks. I reside in District 1. I'm here to discuss Policy BDDH about public comments at Board meetings. Public comments on the workings of the school division by teachers, staff, students, and community members is important to the good governance of YCSD. At the last work session, the Board worked on the BDDH policy, and I have to say, good job. I echo Dr. Kennedy's comments. You took into account the needs of the public to make comments and made adjustments based on the issues that had occurred last year. Now, I want you to remember that the public that held Board members accountable last year, who advocated for changes and whom you may view negatively, are actually reasonable people you can work with to make changes to YCSD and make it the best that it can be, including making lacrosse a sanctioned sport and renaming McGruder Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I now close public participation for comments. It's on. Can you hear me? Maybe I need to lean in a little more. I now close the public participation for comments and citizens. We will next have the public hearing on the FY26 Operating Budget. Dr. Shandor, do you have any remarks before we begin?
I do, just a few, thank you. So before the public forum, I wanted to share that I presented my budget at the February 10 Board Work Session, and I presented this as a needs-based budget. That we do have some new revenue from the state due to our 401 students, so we received approximately $4.3 million. From the county, we received $500,000. Local miscellaneous was $300, and $389,000 increased for federal. I also shared the differences between FY25 and FY26 at the state and the county level. At the state level, in FY25, we received $8.5 million of an increase compared to $4.3 million this year. And locally, we received $2.1 million at FY25, and we're set to receive $500,000 this year. The budget supports -- the budget presentation that I presented supports each of our strategic plan priorities, collective commitment, supportive culture, highly effective talent, and future-ready graduates. The total expenditure needed is over $8.7 million. We do have a budget gap of just over $3.1 million. So I'm going to say that one more time so our community fully understands that. We have a budget gap of $3.1 million. So my total proposed budget is $201,752,626 million. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
You're welcome. I now open the public hearing on FY26 Operating Budget. We have one speaker. Our speaker is Todd Hoagland.
First, I do want to echo all of what the lacrosse people are saying. My daughter played for the championship women's lacrosse team at York High last year, and she honors her time with the lacrosse team. Dr. Shandor, I appreciate you sharing -- I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to talk to one person. I appreciate that Dr. Shandor shared the information and the budget. I understand that budgeting for an entire school district is difficult. I acknowledge that. I am here to speak on behalf of the teachers of York County, who I believe are underpaid, overworked, and are really struggling. Even though some states have increased their average pay for teachers, it has not kept up with the inflation that has also increased over the years, to the point where teachers are actually making 5% less than they did 10 years ago based on inflation. The national average pay for a teacher is $69,597. The average pay for a teacher in Virginia is $63,103, putting Virginia at number 25 of all 50 states. The National Center for Education Statistics say that the national average for a teacher number of years is 14.5 years. Virginia's average for teachers is 14.4 years. I currently am in my 19th year of teaching. However, I am on Step 14 because of the Step Freeze that was instituted before I was hired. My steps have not been returned to me, and to the point where I'm currently earning $69,123. If I was on the correct step, I'd be earning $72,518. This is real. I'm a father of five children. I have to pay the bills. I'm missing money because I'm staying honest and true to York County public schools. I could be earning $72,331 if I go to Hampton. I could be earning $80,255 if I go to Newport News. I don't want to do that. I love York County schools. I speak almost every meeting because I care about this division. Teacher pay -- there was a study that was reported that teacher pay continues to shrink in what's called a pay gap, that teachers in Virginia are actually earning 73% of what their same educated peers are in other fields. So basically, we are being punished for being teachers because of pay. If I was receiving what the national pay gap average is, I'd be earning $94,689. If I was making what the Virginia gap is, which is bigger, I'd be earning over $100,000. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for consideration of livable wages.
All right, was there anybody who did not sign up to speak that would like to speak?
I would.
Oh, didn't you -- on the budget?
Sign up for the budget.
Oh, okay, sure, come on up.
Pam Puchow, District 4. The General Assembly right now is talking about having a special session because they don't know what the federal government's going to be doing where they may lose funding. You're going to have to face the same problems because we don't know what's going to be cut. And if we're already losing money, how much more will we lose? And I think it's incumbent upon every one of you to contact our state legislators and our federal legislators and let them know that you can't function when you can't even put out a decent budget because you don't know what you're going to get. So please, contact people that can make a difference because you don't have the ability to tax us. Unfortunately, our Board of Supervisors does, and if you are desperate for funding, they will in fact have to raise their taxes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that didn't get to speak on budget, that wanted to speak? All right. I now close the public hearing on FY26 Operating Budget, and we'll move forward with our agenda. We're going to move into matters by the Board, and this is where each Board member has the opportunity to speak. So we'll first start with District 5, Ms. Fairman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I had the wonderful opportunity to visit both TAB High School and TAB Middle School last week. I did happen to forget to bring them two large rolls of like poster paper that classrooms can use and things. So, Dr. Shandor, I'll send you an email when I can take those over for their use for the art department or whatever wants to use it. It was donated by Dominion Power when they had closed out their main power station here in York County, and I had already delivered the large rolls to the elementary schools in District 5, as well as Mount Vernon Elementary. So I will make sure that both TAB High and TAB Middle get those. It was wonderful watching the Unity Club basketball game. The Assistant Principal took me around, and she said, "It's going on right now. Would you like to see it?" And it was very loud in there, so I could only handle for a little bit of time, but it was wonderful to watch everybody excited and cheering. And the game that I watched, it was Students Against Faculty, which is always fun. I know back when I was teaching in the schools, it was always exciting to watch my fellow teachers play the students. Let's see, it was also really nice. I had the opportunity to walk through some of the hallways, met the art teacher, had a chance to talk with her, met the Spanish teacher, spoke with her for a little bit. She had some students in the classroom. Like I said, most of them were at the basketball game. And then I had the opportunity to walk through the hallway where the history classes were and saw some wonderful student posters and things. So it was nice to see that they had created things with their hands for their learning for the different parts of history, the different eras. It was really nice to see that. Had the wonderful opportunity to then go to TAB Middle, saw my old classroom where I used to teach, and some of the teachers were still there and who were there when I was a full-time teacher. And that was nice to see them again and see them working with the students in the classroom. I'm still concerned with the amount of time on Chromebooks, and I know one of the things that the Virginia Department of Education actually has a booklet of Education actually has a booklet called Digital Devices in the Classroom. And on page six, it actually has it broken down for the amount of time students need to have screen time, and that includes not only in the classroom, but also at home. And for ages two to five is one hour screen time per day total. Ages six and up, they have it here that it's two to three hours per day for elementary students, and three to four hours per day for secondary students. And I know how that adds up after a while, from what you're doing in the classroom, to testing any assignments that you're doing in the class, and then going home and having homework. And so I know I'm probably beating the drum again, but I would really like to take a look and see how we can make sure that we're not overloading the students with that screen time, because more and more reports are coming out that it's detrimental to their eyesight, it's detrimental to their brain development, things like that, the amount of time on the screens. It's a useful tool, but we can't be on it all the time. And so that's one of the things to look at. And I know some of the people here, they don't like when I bring up the DEI review, although we need, we're going to need to address this, because there are ties to the federal money of making sure that we've removed the DEI from anything. And that doesn't mean that we are removing the Special Ed Department. Special Ed is not DEI. We had Special Ed when I was teaching here twenty years ago, that before the DEI program was put together as a movement. We need to get, make sure that we go through our mission and vision statement and strategic plan. One of the things that I brought up when we were voting on our literacy plan was the HMH, I think it's Hooten, Mifflin, Parkport, I've got the H's right on that. The actual literacy program looked really good, and in looking at the books and some of the readings, my concern was that that company, their main website was all DEI and pushing that particular movement altogether. And if we're gonna be removing that, we need to take a strong look at that. The cultural competency video that's required for everyone to watch through the vector trainings, it forces everyone to acknowledge their implicit bias, which is a main part of DEI and CRT. So yes, colleagues, we do have this here, unfortunately. And the other part is, I'd like to know, back in the beginning, what SEL program we're using. I know when it was first being discussed right after the lockdowns, when we were coming back into school, that it was on our website, that it was Castle. And one of the documents from the Castle website is SEL is a lever for equity. And equity is not equality. And there are some concerns with that. And I would really like to take a look at that and see what we're doing, and how much we're spending on SEL, and if it is really helping our students. We've always taught character. We've always taught the golden rule. I know when we were teaching in the classroom, we weren't spending thousands of dollars on a program that leads to some issues. Let's see, on my notes, sorry. For transparency, I'd like to put out that we should add to our school board webpage on the York County School Division webpage, our bios for each of us, so that anybody going to us, you're not just seeing the names, you're not just seeing the pictures. You can see our background, see what we've done, things like that. And also, I would like to propose that we put specifics on the training we've taken and attended, so that everybody can see what courses we've taken, where it was, you know, if we traveled for it, or if it stayed here. I'd like to propose that. And I'd also like to propose, for transparency, that we post all professional development for review by parents and our citizens who are paying for everything, so they can see, you know, what we're all being trained on here. Have some other things, but I know time is getting late, so I will just save those for the future discussion. I would like to say, on the budget, I know it's going to be tight. And with everything that's going on, I think we're gonna have to do our own version of what's going on at the federal level, to take a look and see where we can trim more if we don't have the money coming in. The taxpayers, and I'm one, I don't have a closet somewhere that has extra taxpayer money, you know, to put towards everything, that it's gonna take us doing the hard job and really tightening the belt, and I know that's difficult. And we need to make sure that we are getting for our students and the teachers what they need in the classroom to support the academic excellence and academic achievement. That's what we need to be focusing on, as well as what the group tonight brought with lacrosse, because the physical aspects of what students learn helps them in their academic achievement. And so if we could take a look at that, and I hope that the board will be revisiting that, to see about adding lacrosse. They've already proven their worth and their time in lasting for eighteen years and doing quite well. I think they've proven it, but it's gonna be tough finding it in the budget, but I think we can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Pyavich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just brief you on, it was a somewhat short month that we had due to the snow. I would like to give praises to all of our staff and teachers for taking care of us during those snow days, and helping our students stay on track with the studies. I know with my kids that helped quite a bit, so thank you for that. During the last thirty days, I actually met with the supervisor, Sheila Knoll. We discussed our budget shortfall, like Dr. Shandor was mentioning, that we do have a gap. We are considering, we're taking it very serious how to bridge the gap and do the right thing for our teachers, for our students, for everybody. I really believe Dr. Shandor and entire team, Mr. Bowman's team, works diligently to help us get through this thing. And I think with the government, with the government's budget, we might be able to get some answers and closure to that. I attended the Grafton Science Fair. That was one of the highlights of this snowy season, just to see so many brilliant minds that we have. It's incredible. That was one of the first events I attended last year, when I got to the board, and seeing kids growing and participating again in some of the new adventures and new experiments. Some of the things that kind of caught my eye, going through it, that I was blown away, was how spacecraft can be slowed down when approaching a planet like Mars using atmospheric drag. So that is our middle school student, I believe. It's like, it's amazing. There was a lot about water filtration, homemade filters, how to, a lot of our students care about our planet, about our environment, about the future, what is to bring. One of our students designed a bridge. He had a couple of models of bridges that he built, and how much of the weight they can wear. And I think he was also in middle school at the time, actually, right then. Also, techniques used in a space mission to recycle water for long-duration missions. Our students done this. Just I cannot make it up. And I think this is what Dr. Skinner said, and I just want to say thank you, Dr. Skinner, for, you and your staff, for putting such an amazing fair. It was just amazing. But her words, that I believe she spoke, it was the, "The world needs scientists. We need people that are curious, that want to think about solutions to the problems we face." That kind of stuck with me, because that's the childhood curiosity that we all had. And I think it's deep inside of us, that we do have these problems that we're facing, and we are scientists trying to resolve some of those issues. And I see us here as a board, an entire YCSD, being those scientists. We do face the problems, but we have brilliant minds. Brilliant minds that look for the future and what we can do to help and do better. Another thing I want to update, I had New Horizons Board of Trustees meeting. Again, one of the amazing sessions. We got a presentation by the Governor's School of Science, and it was about aquaponics research project. One of my, actually, my Senior of the Month for the last month was part of that program. Just what it is, aquaponics is a food production system that combines aquaculture, which is raising fish or prawns in tanks, with hydroponics, which is cultivating plants in water. They create an entire system, ecosystem, of raising food from the fish to the plants, and water being recycled and fed. It just, once when I saw it, I could not believe that we do have something like that, literally in our backyard, and that our students are actually thriving in this field. New Horizons, we had a financial report present to us, and as of end of December, because that was the first meeting in the year, we were at 56.1% in revenue and 43% in expenditures. Doing really well. New Horizons keeping track of all the expenses, trying to stay on a budget. Their staff worked tirelessly, and I want to say thank you to them, and actually, superintendents, for working really hard on that project. CET programs fees is getting increased. We had presentation. My concern was that, will that affect any of the students not being able to participate? And it will not. There is options for the payments, and the expenditures that's increased, it's just to reflect the inflation right now on courses and on materials needed for the studies. And all of the students and parents will receive a copy of the increase whenever they receive the acceptance letter in May. We do have an audit report that's in progress for the FY twenty-three, twenty-four. We're gonna have the updates soon on that. We do, we are working right now on a budget development. As of January thirty-first, the draft of superintendent's, draft was submitted to superintendents with the divisional cost allocations for review. On March eighteen, draft of the budget for twenty-five, it's gonna be reviewed by superintendents. On March twenty-fifth, presentation of the budget is gonna be done to the Board of Trustees. Some timeframe in April or May, the budget's gonna be approved by the superintendents, and on May twenty-seventh, it's gonna be submitted for the approval by the Board of Trustees. Just like to remind everybody that on top of February being Black History Month, it's also CET month. And I would like to recognize all of our staff at YCSD for, as a CET month, for their hard work, and I want to congratulate them for everything. That being said, that would be all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, I'm gonna be a little bit quicker tonight. I'd like to thank the school district for taking care of us through the snow. And I'm gonna thank them for the asynchronous learning days, because those were actually very, very well thought out. As you know, my wife's a teacher in first grade. She was in meetings on those days and developing plans, and had made the packets up for her kids, which in early grades, K through two, that's what they did, and then the upper grades then go on to Canvas. But it was very good, and it worked, and I'd say thank goodness for that screen time. But also, Dr. Shandor, correct me if I'm wrong, but Special Ed, doesn't that fall under the I for inclusion?
The I, you know, it's for individualized, individualized education.
Yeah, but I'm talking about-
Inclusion is a setting in special education.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. I did like to say that I got to attend a elementary school dance at Waller Mill, and it is the cutest thing to see those little kids take their moms out and dance with them. And the little girls take their dads out there. And their ideas of fancy dresses to go to these dances, it'd just blow you away. I mean, I saw some pretty neat outfits. I got to be the one that took the money for the concessions, and they always work me hard whenever I'm there. They take advantage of it. But we had a great time there. I've been able to attend a couple of basketball games, which is a lot of fun, and looking forward to the next series of spring sports, and looking forward to Read Across America, which is right upon us. Can you believe it? Man. And that's gonna be great, because I love to be able to go into each of the schools and read. It's just so much fun. But there we go. There you are, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say one thing about the McGruder name change, that I've had some conversations with the superintendent. I know a couple of the board members, I've had separate conversations, I believe, with him as well. They're just verifying some of the research on that, that they have to do, and then, of course, the cost involved, you know, what that's gonna be. Probably gonna be minimal, but you know, you gotta think all this through, all the way through. And I know that what I'd like to see is us discuss it at one of our upcoming work sessions, hopefully. But Dr. Shandor, can you elaborate?
Just really briefly, yeah, just really briefly. And I'm disappointed that they had walked out before we had the opportunity to bring this up. Dr. Carroll and Dr. Aaron Butler have spent a great deal of time researching as well. They've gone to, what's the name of the library, Dr. Carroll? Schwem? Schwem? The Schwem Library. They've done a lot of research. They've talked to former students and a number of other researchers up in the Williamsburg area. Dr. Carroll is finalizing a report that he's gonna submit to the board, hopefully in the next week or so. So we'll give you all the information that you need to guide the next steps of that decision. Ms. Lassiter, who was here, I responded to an email from her last week, I believe, right before the snow. I think Dr. Carroll may have as well, and I'm not sure if Ms. Goodwin has responded too, so all three of us have responded. So we're working on it. It just, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight.
No, I understand. I just want to reiterate that, you know, you're doing your other jobs, and then this is something else that was added, the one that you're trying to accomplish as well. So thank you for the time in doing that. It's certainly appreciated. But I just wanted to let everybody know that it's being worked on, it's being looked at. We're gonna discuss it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to thank everybody that came out to speak tonight. I know that you all have a lot more important things that you could probably do besides coming and sitting at a board meeting, but it shows that you care, and that these are issues that you're passionate about. Just understand that delay on, you know, what appears like delay is not necessarily denial, or that we've just kicked it aside. There's a lot of different things that we all have to work on, outside of many of us having full-time jobs. And so we try to prioritize things, like it's budget season, we're trying to get through that. But everything that you've shared tonight, the board is definitely going to take into consideration and discuss, you know, the, I know the ongoing battle of not being paid enough as teachers and the steps, you know, that's an ongoing thing, and we definitely want to be able to do something. It's just, how do we do it, and when can we do something? I totally understand. I remember when I was working in the county, this was years ago, I think half of the time that I was here, half of the eight years, I think we were frozen, so I didn't see those. And it is unfortunate. The lacrosse thing, I know they're not here, but just a shout out for the students that came out to speak. I love it when I see students come out and speak. And I was lacrosse mom, so I have a big heart for lacrosse. And I'm impressed that it's eighteen years as a club. That's really amazing. So we're gonna see what we can do. You've already heard about what's happening with McGruder. So just rest assured that we're working on those things. I wasn't able really to get out and about as much in the last month and a half, just a lot of things, and with the weather. But I was able to make the Yorktown Women's Club art exhibit, where they displayed the art for our YCSD students. That was last Tuesday, and it did not disappoint. We have so many talented K through twelve students who are very artistic. And I'm always like, in awe, when a kindergartner can do better art than I can. But a shout out to the art teachers, because I know that they help develop that talent. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention is that I did receive some emails and, you know- know, requests about what are, what's going on with ICE and the VD, or the Federal Department of Education, and how is that all going to flesh out? And I've definitely, you know, the board members are aware, and Dr. Shander's going to be addressing that a little later this evening. Okay, that's all I have.
You may want to add Saturday night, the Yorktown night at the Admirals?
Oh, yes, so I was able to go to the Yorktown Admirals game and drop, do what's called puck drop. It was Yorktown Day, and so we were celebrating Yorktown, and did our, I don't, our students end up going there? I didn't see, okay, they did. I think I had stepped out during the time when our students actually came out to sing. But, yeah, so I, they sang, and I was asked by our Board of Supervisor, Ms. Sheila, the Chair, Ms. Sheila Knoll, to join them in dropping a puck out on the ice, and it was really great, because you get to sit in the penalty box, and you get to see the players up close, a little intimidating at times, but.
And they won.
Yes, and they, and they won. We were one goal short of free Krispy Kreme doughnuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was good. Oh, and on that note, I did forget to mention that I too did meet with our, my Board of Supervisor from my district, Wayne Dreary, and we had a long discussion about the budget, and I advocated for our needs, especially pointing out specifics on how lean we are in many areas already, and our per pupil costs are probably one of the lowest around, yet we are able to maintain that standard of being third in the state and first in the district. So, you know, we're working hard on that end too, so I don't want to see any programs cut, I don't want to see, you know, things not happen, so we're working, or I'm working, some of us are working, I guess. We're all working. All right, thank you very much. So now I'm going to ask Mr. Pyavich, this is the fun part of the meeting. The financial matters.
All right, Madam Chair, I'd like to present claim certified for payment for January twenty-twenty-five. Significant expenditures for January, instructional related expenditures total approximately three hundred eleven thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars, and includes payments to Allied Healthcare, Beautiful Minds Speech, Care Stop Partners, Maximum Healthcare Services, New Horizons, Plan B Academy, SHIVRST, the Falcon Center. Payment for technology-related items total approximately seventy-nine thousand three hundred thirty dollars, and includes payments to AVI equipment, CDW, Cox Communications, Virginia Business Systems. Then payments for operations and maintenance totaling two hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred dollars, and includes payments to Synthus, Dominion Energy, Ferguson Enterprise, Griner, HRSD, Reliance Acquisitions, Republic Service, Riverside Paper, Virginia Natural Gas. Payments for school nutrition services totaling one million two hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars, and includes payments to Alto Hartley, Gold Creek Foods, and Sodesco. Payments related to capital projects totaling one billion thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars, and includes payments to APT Acquisition, Continental Contractors, Mobile East, Schick Communication, Simpson Unlimited, Steiner Moore Corporation, Thompson Consulting. Moving on to consideration of approval of financial report for January twenty-twenty-five. Significant changes relating to the operating budget for January revenues. State revenue is approximately six point four million higher in January FY twenty-five when compared to January F twenty-four, FY twenty-four. The changes is due to the increase in student enrollment, at-risk funding, and at the state's portion of the five point five percent compensation increase for FY twenty-five. Federal revenue is approximately three point one million less in FY twenty-five due to the expiration of one-time asset stimulus grant in FY twenty-five. For expenditures, expenditures for instructions are approximately four point three million higher in January twenty-five when compared to January twenty-four, due to the five point five increase in salaries, increase in employer health care, health premiums, and additional position added for FY twenty-five. Now, significant changes related to the school nutrition budget for revenue and expenditures, school nutrition revenue is approximately hundred eighty thousand dollars higher in January FY twenty-five due to the increase in meals served for FY twenty-five. Food service expenditures are approximately two hundred eight thousand higher in FY twenty-five. This is also due to the increase in meals served for the school year. Consideration of approval of Resolution twenty-five oh six. Resolution twenty-five dash oh six requires the board's approval authorizing pre-procurement of more than hundred thousand dollars or changes orders greater than fifty thousand dollars. There are four items on resolution totaling seven hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, the details of which can be viewed on the board tax. Madam Chair, I would now move to approve financial matters as listed.
I second.
Ms. Howard? Oh, wait, discussion, is there any discussion?
I have a question on the fiscal year twenty-five school nutrition report. At the bottom, it just says the food service revenue for January twenty-twenty-five is up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars when compared to January twenty-twenty-four due to increase in meals served. Then number two, it says the food service expenditures reflect an increase of two hundred and seven thousand seven hundred eighty-nine ninety-one. This is also a result of increase in meals served in fiscal year twenty-five. I guess just looking at it, that the expenditures are more than the revenue, is that an issue that we need to look at, or?
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, that question, it can be in the timing of which the expenditures occur.
Okay.
So what we've seen with some of our expenditures, we're purchasing a lot of equipment, and so we're having a spend down of a large, a rather large fund balance that was generated through the COVID years, where meals were provided free to our students, but the federal government was providing us that money, so we have a very large fund balance that we are spending down as required by the Department of Education. So we should see expenditures month to month, month exceed our revenue for food service. The meals do cost money, we have seen a little bit of inflation in the cost of the, of the food services, our food supplies, and of course, labor is always a concern for us, because we do outsource our food service operations, and we have seen an increase in our labor for this year as well.
Okay, thank you. I was just concerned that, you know, making sure that we were going to be keeping up with the revenues for those expenses.
What's not shown on that report is, of course, our fund balance. We have about a four million dollar fund balance that we're spending down aggressively, and we hope to have that done here in the next six to eight months.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
All right, Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve of financial matters as listed. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
All right, so now we'll go over the consent calendar. We have approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes from a regular meeting on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, a special meeting on February seventh, twenty-twenty-five, a work session on February tenth, twenty-twenty-five, a special meeting on February tenth, twenty-twenty-five, and a special meeting on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Approval of donations in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Approval of a student activity and overnight field trip for the York High School NJROTC to participate in the National Orienting Championship. I'd like, approval, approval of consent calendar is listed, I'd like to have a motion and a second.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar is listed.
Are there any questions?
I think there's just a typo, it's on the agenda, I just want to make sure it wasn't on for the.
For the meeting?
For the, for the actual meeting for February tenth, it should be twenty-twenty-five, and it's typed in as twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah.
I've done the same thing, you know, typing.
I'll take it right now.
That was in the minutes list.
Oh, the minutes, okay. Oh, that one, no, okay.
So I'd like to amend, amend it with change to be twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Is that it? All right. Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the consent calendar as listed with the correction of the minutes to twenty-twenty-five. Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
We have no action items, we don't have a policy discussion, we do have a policy first reading. Ms. Berry, are there any changes since the work session?
At the work session, the board provided some comments as to policy BBDH slash KD, and we did make the changes on page one. However, was asked to be removed, but when we researched it, use of however is the grammatically correct terminology, using with the semicolon, so that's why that is still in there. On page three, the board had decided on a forty-five minute time for public comment. If there were more people beyond the forty-five minutes, the board would vote, majority vote would rule, to extend the time or not, otherwise, the remaining speakers would speak at the end of the board meeting. The brief periods of applause or cheering, it was suggested that brief or reasonable be used. However, that concerned staff as to still creating subjectivity, so we were looking at brief periods of applause or cheering in parentheses limited to approximately fifteen seconds in duration, so that would give you a smaller timeframe, which would be more reasonable, but it also gives a time limit. And I believe those were the only ones.
I think it was me that brought up the time limit, I'm good with the fifteen seconds, that's certainly reasonable, not a problem.
All right. Then we have a policy second reading action. Are there any changes since the last reading? Any questions, comments?
There are no changes since the first reading for the rest of policy K.
Okay. Can I please have a first and a second to approve revisions to policy K, school community relations?
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve changes to policy K, school community relations, and I'll second.
Okay.
There you go.
Any discussion? No change, okay. All right, Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the revisions to policy K, school community relations. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
All right. I will now turn it over to Dr. Shander for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin, and again, good evening, board members. First, I wanted to also recognize Ms. Howard for her work as the board clerk. As you know, she supports me daily, which, as you know, is a big chore for her. She's kind, she's patient, she's thorough, she works really hard to meet the needs of the families and staff members, and of course, you as board member, so thank you, Ms. Howard. I have just a couple items this evening, so the Chair and Vice Chair have asked me to share some information related to the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, so I'm going to ask Dr. Carroll to come to the podium to share some information. Dr. Carroll?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Members of the board, it's been about five weeks since President Trump signed an executive order that would allow ICE to go into schools, hospitals, churches. To date, there have been no documented cases of that happening, however, we are prepared. We first received legal consultation from Mrs. Berry, also from the VSBA and VAS. All of those, all those guidances were aligned. We also spoke to Sheriff Montgomery and Major West about any interaction they'd had with ICE. They had already had some conversations with the ICE office here in Hampton Roads, and we feel like we have a good take on what would happen if there was to be a visit from ICE to any of our schools. And it's in line with what we've heard on the national news, that that would only be if they were out looking for a serious criminal. So we gave direction to our principals at the first principals' meeting after that announcement, and we gave them the direction that, number one, they will follow policy J E D, which they were all well aware of, and that talks about at the end of that policy, who's authorized to take students off of a, off of school grounds. And it is no different than any other law enforcement situation that we might have. We occasionally have an arrest that happens at a campus, but that's also with a lot of coordination with the school. But what has to be present is there has to be a warrant that is signed, either judicial or administrative, and we gave them steps to follow, and they would not be handling that on their own. There are contact people at the school board office that would help them verify that the warrant is legitimate, and then they would also be contacting parents during this time. And then the last thing is there might be a request for information on individuals, and we would have that directed to Mrs. Berry, so she could review the request, and it would be in line with what we already do with any directory information. And that, that concludes my report on that.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. I have Mr. Richardson and Ms. Goodwin also asked that I briefly share some information related to the impact if the Federal Department of Education was shut down. So essentially, we receive over twenty-one million dollars in the following programs, I'm going to list these for you. So we receive federal dollars from Title One, which is Improving Basic Instruction for Economically Disadvantaged Students, Title Two, which is Mentor Teaching and PD, Title Three, which is Limited English Proficiency, Title Four, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, Title Six B, which is Special Education, Title One, CTE, which is Carl Perkins, and then Title Six B, Special Education Preschool. We also receive funding from Impact Aid. You okay? Okay. I was the one who was coughing the whole meeting. Impact Aid for eight point seven million, DoD heavily impacted one point two million, and then we have a series of competitive grants, so we receive competitive grants from the federal government, from the Security Equipment Grant, DoDIA Maritime, NOAA, which is the Meaningful Watershed Educational Experiences, DoDIA Foreign Language Grant, and the twenty-twenty-four DoDIA World Language. So those are, those competitive grants could be impacted, again, we don't know, because we don't have all the information, but what we're understanding is the competitive grants could be affected, however, all of the title grants that I listed earlier won't be affected by the pause in federal funding. So Impact Aid, Mr. Bowen did contact the Office of Impact Aid, and at this point in time, Impact Aid is a specific congressional appropriation, it should not be, should not be affected. As I mentioned earlier, the competitive grants could be affected, but our title grants will not be affected. Any questions related to that? I just wanted to provide that information for the board and for our community.
How much are we looking in competitive grants?
I'm so sorry. Our competitive grant total is about six point one million. Let's see, finally, I think most of us are hoping that winter is behind us, and that we can move on with the school year. We appreciate all of our staff and students and parents' effort during the days we were out. Again, board members, I appreciate you recognizing their hard work during those days off. We also want to make sure that we shout out the gentlemen and guys and ladies who are out, actually in the snow, you know, spreading salt on our sidewalks and scraping the parking lots, so we really appreciate all the work they do when they get out there when we have bad weather. Finally, I want to wish all of our winter athletes the best as they compete at the state levels next week. We had a number of our sports, VHSL pushed them back to next weekend, I believe it was indoor track, swimming, and potentially wrestling, so hopefully. So, um, hopefully, um, the board will be able to recognize some state champions at the next meeting. This concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Look for Bruton to do it again in swimming, okay?
All right, is there anybody, uh, who did not sign up to speak this evening on either topic, last call, that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your input and for being here this evening. The meeting is now adjourned.